Counselor Siomo. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancey. And Counselor Zachem.
And Counselor Baker, so I please acknowledge that, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
I would ask at this time for all counselors and guests to please rise. I invite Counselor Flaherty to the podium to introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask that all members and guests remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President, and on your behalf and all of our colleagues here, I have the distinct honor and privilege to introduce my first grade nun, no stranger to many folks in this chamber, and that's Sister Evelyn Hurley, Sister of Chasier-Nazareth. And Sister will be turning 99 on March the 7th. And unfortunately, she'll be leaving the city and our beloved community of South Boston, having served there for over 60 years. She'll be returning to the motherhouse, a retirement home for the Sisters of Charity, and it's in Kentucky. And so with heavy hearts, we're bidding farewell to somebody who has had the profound impact on thousands, thousands of children, thousands of families, not just in South Boston. She got a strong connection to Roxbury as well. Her father, Bill Hurley, Bill Hurley's log house was on Albany Street. But she's part of the City Council family because her dad served in the Boston City Council. He had served on the council from 1946 to 1955, served as council president from 1949 to 1955, and also played a pivotal role as a Massachusetts delegate in the election of Franklin Delano Roosevelt. So, strong history to Boston politics, strong history, and we're going to miss her tremendously in the community and in the city. And she's maintained contact in terms of, I'll give a quick funny story if people don't know this, I don't even know if Sister knows this. I was so excited to go to first grade, so excited to go to Sister Evelyn's class because of the reputation that she had in the community, that I got dressed in my school uniform the night before, right? So, didn't want to be late, and of course, my mother woke me up and I was like an unmade bed, I was wrinkled, had to take everything off, my mother had iron everything to put me back in shape to go up to see Sister Evelyn from my first grade class, so a little footnote there. But Sister has maintained a strong relationship with me and my family through my mother Peg, borrow a Jesuit phrase, "Men for others." Sister truly has been a nun for others for so many years. And so without further ado, someone who's very near and dear and special to me, someone I love tremendously and has had a profound impact on me and my commitment in service to other people, Sister Evelyn Hurley. Can you just start as loud as you want?
Good morning.
Good morning.
And I do want to say about Michael. Michael, when he was in the first grade, he still has this wonderful trait of thoughtfulness, compassion, and of course, they've increased through the years. I'm very proud of Michael, and I'm honored to be here today. And for our prayer. O God of mercy and understanding and peace, restore your gifts of wisdom, compassion, responsibility, and cooperation on Mayor Martin Walsh and this special body of city counselors. Help our beloved city of Boston to maintain racial harmony, to reject all violence, to strive for understanding, especially of how to better the lives of all the constituents. Let there be, let us each realize that we need each other, and let there be peace on earth, peace in our hearts, peace in our city, and let this peace begin with you. Amen.
Thank you, Sister Evelyn. That was a very special, warm, and heartfelt message to all of us. We take it very seriously. Would members and guests, please, you are standing, yeah, Counselor Flaherty will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge.
The pledge is to declare the United States of America a free, sovereign, and peaceful. At this time, we're going to, we're going to ask Sister Evelyn to stay here and so
that we could do a brief presentation for her. But before I turn the mic back to Counselor Flaherty, the Catholic Church has an extraordinary role in the building of the city of Boston. And some of the things that have sustained more than others are those that were built by the great women of the Catholic Church, the nuns, who have done so many extraordinary things over the years. And I just, on her 99th birthday, I just wanted as the President of the Council to acknowledge this city would not be what it is if it wasn't for the good nuns of the Catholic and Orthodox Diocese here in the city of Boston. So, thank you, Sister, for what you've done for all of us.
All said, Mr. President. And I have an official resolution on behalf of all of us here. Sister, be it resolved that the Boston City Council recognizes you, Sister Evelyn Hurley, Sister of Charity Nazareth, in recognition of your 99th birthday and your lifelong dedication to the South Boston community and to the entire city, and be it further resolved that the Boston City Council declares March 7th, which is your birthday, as Sister Evelyn Hurley Day in the city of Boston, duly signed by the President and members of the City Council. So, congratulations, Sister.
Thank you so, so much. That is an honor that I never even conceived of, and it's just been an honor to be among you today. Thank you.
If I could ask my colleagues to come out for a quick photo of Sister Evelyn?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Counselor Murphy to the podium for a presentation to a dear friend of his. Everyone knows this individual, and I'll give Counselor Murphy the opportunity to introduce our special guest, Susan Warnock. Susan, if you would come down, please, that'd be great. We'd like both you and Sister to meet and say hello. Once again, I'll introduce Counselor Stephen Murphy. Thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor for me to be here with a longtime friend of mine who really needs no introduction to anybody in this chamber. She has been in everyone's home for the past 34 years, anchoring the news, Midday News, the highest rated newscast in the city, WCVB's Channel 5's Midday News. And part of it is because this woman was the anchor. And, you know, Winston Churchill, and I know that Susan didn't know Winston Churchill Winston Churchill had a quotation, he said, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." And Susan Warnock has made hundreds, if not thousands, of lives because throughout her career as anchorwoman on WCVB, she was also involved in giving back virtually every day of her life to this city. She grew up in Natick, she lives now in Needham. She needs really no introduction, other than to say that she has been a staple. And we all come here in an effort to give back, but that's our job, and people send us here to do that. And Susan's job was to anchor the news and to be a consumer advocate before that, but she probably did more giving back of her own time and her own treasure than we all know. And I, for one, felt a tremendous loss personally when she signed off last Friday. I saw the Chronicle piece on Susan, and I've known her as a warm and giving person for most of my adult life, and it's my honor to introduce my friend on Susan Warnock Day here in Boston City Hall, Susan Warnock.
Just one time. I can't begin to tell you how thrilled I am, and I'm actually trembling from excitement. First of all, Sister, oh my God, to know, if I had known I was going to have the opportunity to meet you today, it would have been all the reason to come, forget about all this other stuff. You are just remarkable, and I know, I share everyone's love for you. And when I think about probably the, you know, just the hundreds of thousands of lives you have touched, directly or indirectly, it is absolutely an honor to be on this same program with you today. Of course, my fears that someone is going to confuse the details of our awards. All the best, and please stay in touch, I know you will. It is because of you that the city of Boston is this great. I have been in the city of Boston my whole career, really. I started as a radio reporter, some of you may know. Kevin White was the mayor, George Rigan was his press secretary. It was even before you, Counselor Yancey. You are one of the few to whom I cannot say, your mother breastfed you watching me. But it's been just such an exciting time. I mean, Dapper O'Neil was one of the counselors, and we covered all the council, all the council meetings. And so I have watched this great city evolve into one of the greatest cities in the world, and that's because of all of you and generations before. There is no better city than Boston, it's just that simple, and it's because of the people. And so I'm so honored to be here today to say thank you, because that's really my most important message, just thank you. Thank you to all of you for everything that you've done, and together, I know, we're all going to continue to work to continue to make Boston just the best city in the world. And thank you.
Should I read it?
No. It was long.
It is long.
It's long. Why don't we just say six whereases and then call it a day?
There's only seven. Then it resolves. The President has asked me to read the resolution. Whereas Ms. Warnock was born in Bronx, New York, attended Natick High School, graduated from Emerson College, and currently resides in Needham, Massachusetts. And whereas Ms. Warnock has been a member of the WCVB-TV Channel 5 news team since 1981, anchoring the most-watched newscast, WCVB-TV Midday, since 1989. And whereas Ms. Warnock has used her position of reporter and anchor to solidify her place as consumer advocate, notably reporting on a story that exposed problems with Toyota Tundras and led to a national safety recall in 2010. And whereas Ms. Warnock's tenacity is displayed not only in her reporting, but also in her tireless efforts to improve the lives of New England residents through her philanthropic works as a founding member of Funny Women, Serious Business, and Lily's Lunch fundraisers for Rosie's Place, the first women's shelter in the United States. Whereas Ms. Warnock is a highly sought-after celebrity auctioneer for countless charitable events, including the Mass Coalition for the Homeless and My Im Hay Im. And whereas the virtues of truth, honesty, and philanthropy guide, philanthropy guide Ms. Warnock's actions in the newsroom and, more importantly, in the community, therefore be it resolved that the members of the Boston City Council, in meeting assembled, do hereby extend their sincere gratitude to Susan Warnock for her outstanding philanthropic endeavors in the city of Boston, and wish her enjoyment in her retirement, and do hereby declare that Wednesday, March 5th, 2014, be Susan Warnock Day in the city of Boston.
What time is the duck tour? Thank you so much.
We're on it. Now, thank you, Counselor Murphy. Thanks, Counselor Flaherty. Thank our special guests, Susan Warnock and Sister Evelyn, to make today a very special day here in the Boston City Council. Approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, please, public officers and others, thank you, reports.
Would you like, would you like all of them?
Yeah. Madam Clerk, read docket 0427 through 0435. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. 0427, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Kevin Coyne as interim purchasing agent effective March 3rd, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. 0428, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Christopher Cook as interim commissioner of Parks and Recreation Department, effective March 3rd, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0429, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Larry Memoli as a member of the Public Facilities Commission, for term expiring January 1st, 2018. Docket number 0430, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Keith Williams as the interim executive director of the Offices of Boston Residence Jobs Policy and Small and Local Business Enterprise Office, effective March 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0431, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Justin Holmes as the interim director of Management Information Systems, effective March 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0432, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of John Hassan as the interim fire commissioner of the Boston Fire Department, effective March 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0433, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of James Gallulie as interim commissioner of Transportation, effective March 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0434, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Michael Dennehy as interim commissioner of Public Works, effective March 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0435, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Antonio Nuzziante as interim director of the Office of Tourism, Arts Tourism and Special Events, effective March 3rd, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days.
Docket 0427 through 0435 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, that is recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0263, order for hearing to examine the impact that trash placement in collection services has on the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, Counselor McCarthy.
That meeting was very well attended, and there's a lot of discussion that continues. Public Works has several questions that need to be answered, and we recessed that meeting to a, to a future date.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Docket 0263 will remain in committee. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0244 and 0245.
Docket number 0244, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Dr. Maia Minter-Jordan as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission, for a term expiring January 15th, 2016. Docket number 0245, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Manny Lopes as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission, for a term expiring January 17th, 2017.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, Communities, Counselor Presley.
Women, Families, and Communities convened a hearing on docket 0244 and 0245 for the confirmation of the appointments of Dr. Minter-Jordan and Mr. Lopes to the Boston Public Health Commission. Dr. Minter-Jordan has many years of experience in community health, including in her current role as president and CEO of the Demick Community Health Center. She wants to bring her passion and expertise in disparities and access to mental health and substance abuse care to the commission. Mr. Lopes also has many years of experience working at East Boston Health Center for most of his adult life. He is currently the center's CEO. He wants to bring his expertise in management, managing systems, government and business processes, and IT to the commission. I have to say, this, there were so many people, the vice chair, Counselor McCarthy, joined me yesterday, and there were counselors coming in who lamented the fact that they didn't have an opportunity to speak favorably of these two very impressive candidates before us. So, I recommend moving the listed dockets from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. My recommendation is that these appointments be confirmed.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Presley, in her articulate manner, is noting that many of, many of us were late yesterday.[1611.45][1611.45](laughter) And as she so eloquently put it, I am not as eloquent as she, but I do want to, want to note that Dr. Minter-Jordan is an amazing leader. She is someone who, and I think a lot of folks don't realize what Demick Community Health Center actually does. They are really our primary center for substance abuse in, in the city of Boston. They have programs for men as well as women on, on that campus, and they are looking to expand. Under her leadership, we, we are seeing that center go to new levels, and they're not merely, and they changed their name because of this, it used to be Health, it used to be called a Health Center. They are really a center of our neighborhood and community. They are also the largest employer in Roxbury, having over 400, 400 workers there. And I just want to put my name, recommendation, and all of that behind Dr. Minter-Jordan as well as Manny Lopes. And I'd like to thank Counselor Presley for running such an efficient and short hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Presley moves acceptance of the committee report and confirmation of docket 0244. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0244 is confirmed. The Chair moves, moves for confirmation of the committee report and passage of docket 0245. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0245 has been confirmed. Docket 0345.
Docket 0345, order for hearing regarding medical marijuana dispensaries.
Docket 0345 will remain in the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, Communities. Thank you. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0436, Counselor Lamatina will offer the following order for hearing regarding funds for parks, development, and redevelopment.
Counselor Lamatina.
This is, and I didn't hold a hearing last year on this because I filed it late in the year, and I wanted to wait to, we had the new mayor and the new administration, so that we could really look at the parks department. As you know, the Parks Department budget is only $17 million, and $11 million actually goes to salaries. So, there really isn't a lot of money. And former Commissioner Pollak, I give her a lot So, there really isn't a lot of money, and former Commissioner Pollak, I give her a lot of credit. We honored her last week on her retirement, and she raises a lot of money for the Parks Department, and thank God for the friends. We have a lot of friends that support our parks, but we have nearly $5 billion in the next couple of years in development happening in this city. And I think we really need to look at a formula to get some of that mitigation money to be directed to the parks. There's money that goes into affordable housing. There's sometimes when there's mitigation money, it goes to transportation and arts, but more and more people are moving into city, and more and more Bostonians are using our parks. And you look at the Boston Park, in which everybody in the whole state uses, that park needs millions and millions and millions of dollars worth of renovations, just in that park alone. So, I want to get the administration, all of us together, and come up with a plan, see how we could get some more money to maintain our parks, because it's really a valuable resource for all of us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Lamatina. Councilor Presley?
Docket, thank you, Council.
Madam Clerk, could you please add my name to matters 0436? And also add Councilor McCarthy's, Councilor Murphy's, Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Wu, Councilor Yancy, Councilor Zecham, Councilor Jackson, Councilor Baker, and Councilor Seomo. Docket 0346, oh, I'm sorry, and Councilor Presley. You had your chance. Docket 0436 will refer to the Committee on the Environment and Parks.
Docket number 0437, Councilor Zecham offered the following order for hearing to discuss the right to affordable housing, housing inequality, and the Inclusionary Development Program.
Councilor Zecham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I filed this hearing order because I think, as is apparent to many of us, there's a growing lack of a reasonable affordable housing options for working and middle-class individuals and families in the city of Boston. Bostonians in every neighborhood and of all backgrounds truly have a right to clean, safe, and affordable housing. And as we all know, this has become increasingly difficult for people to access in our city. I also think that we need more predictability for folks in the real estate and development community, and a more objective roadmap. These are people who are investing in our city and building the future of Boston, and really need predictability, and I hope to have their input in this process as well. Now, I think with the opportunity of a new administration, with Mayor Walsh, with many new folks in the council, it's a great time to examine what we can do to make sure that housing options are available for everyone in this city. So, I hope to engage the real estate and development community, nonprofit leaders, academic experts, members of this council, obviously, and from the administration, from the BRA, and neighborhood development, and other city agencies, to make sure we can come together to help tackle this issue, to make sure it becomes, to make sure it does not become a civil rights and economic crisis in this city. I look forward to the hearing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Zecham. Councilor Presley.
Just wish to commend the maker for his thoughtful and timely order, and I wish to have my name added.
Please add Councilor Presley's name. And add Councilor O'Malley's name, Councilor Jackson's, Councilor Seomo's, Councilor Yancy's, Councilor Wu.
And commend the maker on this, and make sure that we are also thinking about affordable housing as a potential backlog for other types of housing, too. So, visits to many homeless shelters and other organizations have really shown that as affordable housing becomes incredibly difficult to secure, transitional housing, meant for domestic violence survivors and others to occupy for six months as they're looking for the next step, has now stretched on to nine months, a year plus. Emergency shelter now stretched on to even, now stretched very thin because of all the backlogs. So, I wanted to thank the counselor for bringing up this issue early and for framing it as a civil rights issue. And please add my name.
Please add Councilor Wu's name. Docket 0437 will be referred to the Committees on Housing and the Committee on Human Rights jointly. Thank you.
Docket number 0438, Councilor Jackson offered the following order, approving a petition for the special law regarding liquor licenses in the City of Boston.
Councilor Jackson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I rise to discuss an issue that we, many of us know, and I want to first give credit to someone who has been blazing a trail in this space, Council Presley, for the great work that she has been doing at the city level to ensure equity and opportunity relative to access to real profitable businesses. We know we live in a city that has high costs, and we know that when we look at restaurants, there's a 7% to 11% margin on food. So, therefore, you need to sell other things to keep your doors open. Right now, in Dudley Square, I have seven, seven-plus businesses that are going out of business. One is a sit-down restaurant that does not have a liquor license. This is actually proposed as an "and," not an "or," to what Council Presley has already so aptly and massively put forward. The ask is for six full licenses and six beer and wine licenses. I look at my friend, Sal Lamatina, and know that in a half a mile radius, there's over 90 licenses in his, in part of his district. I can't even say his whole district. In Dudley Square, right now, we are seeing a renaissance. Something new is happening there, and it's something good. We have $960 million of proposed and permitted development in Dudley Square right now. We know that 13 licenses were granted to a project in Somerville, where they were able to attract 5,000 jobs from partners. Now, that upsets me, because partners actually take a big subsidy from our city, and Mass General, and other hospitals. That's upsetting, but one of the issues that was put out was the issue of amenities in the area. Where are people going to eat? Where are people going to go out? And now, there's something that people kind of speak to, which is that third place. You have work, you have home, where's your cheers? And so, that's a significant component. And we have 18,000 square feet of retail space opening up in the Ferdinand Building. Hopefully, they're going to be opening in January, I'm just going to say February, just to be safe, because I know how buildings go. And so, the objective here is to have licenses online, so that we have the bright lights of new businesses in Roxbury, so that we have the bright lights of new businesses, actually to also deal with the issues of public safety. Many of you are old enough to remember when Kenmore Square wasn't the Kenmore Square of the Eastern Standard, when it was the Kenmore Square of Narcissus back in the day, a place that was somewhat dangerous at that time. And it's now a place that is now online, based on the businesses that are there. And so, I put this forward for your consideration, and hopefully, your support, as we attempt to bring economic development and vitality and access and opportunity to the Dudley Square area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the maker. I do appreciate the intent behind this proposed home rule petition. The counselor and I are good friends, and sometimes friends disagree, and right now, we disagree. He's doing his part in his role as a district counselor to fight for his district. I started my work on reforming the state liquor license law over two years ago, with the Ferdinand Development in Roxbury as my driving force, really the impetus, because I knew that even if we moved hundreds of city employees to this site, by putting the BPS administrative offices in Dudley at the end of their workday, if they didn't have gathering places, spaces to come together, they wouldn't be spending their money in that community, and ultimately, supporting the needs to build wealth in this community. As an at-large counselor, I'm tasked with seeing the impact on the whole city. I've spoken with residents and business owners in every neighborhood, and people in every neighborhood who want to see real, meaningful change to the state's antiquated liquor license laws. I am concerned, although it is very well-meaning, that the proposal before us today may keep the status quo, and really not get at the issue that I'm most concerned about, and that is the disparity issue. I fear that Roxbury will still be woefully behind places like the North End, in terms of access to licenses, with no path, but with no path to move forward. I fear this pits neighborhoods against one another, and worst of all, it leaves control of the licensing process in the hands of the state. But city government is closest to the people. We, as Boston City counselors, know best what our neighborhoods, residents, and business owners need. If we approve this proposal, we may be going backwards. Somerville has year after year petitioned the state in this way, and year after year, they must go back. The city, and 12 of us, agreed on December 18th of last year that we should have control over the process. The home rule petition that I authored, and many of you, including Counselor Jackson, I thank you for your participation throughout the process, in our working groups chaired by the Government Operations Chair at the time. The home rule petition that I offered, and that you all unanimously approved, I believe accomplishes both. It proposes specific priorities and protections for empowerment zones like Roxbury, while advancing big-picture, permanent, citywide reform. My home rule is right now making its way through the State House process. It's in the Committee on Consumer Protection and Professional Licensor. And since last November, I have had several very productive and positive conversations with Chair Skyback, and with our sponsor, Rep. Holmes. All of us feel hopeful that we can pass a solid bill, and I'm encouraged by the momentum that we're building. When 12 of you voted in support of my home rule, you entrusted me with the task of getting this passed at the state level. I will need your help. I will seek your feedback and your guidance along the way, but I ask that you give me a fair shot to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. Councilor Baker. Withdraw. Thank you. Councilor Flaherty.
Mr. President, just an interesting discussion, and obviously, I would look forward to having the hearing. It's interesting, because under the previous administration, it was really sort of a pay-to-play system, where it was more about who you knew and who you hired, and that's how you got your licenses, not much about, you know, the needs of a community, or the business plan, or the financing. And so, to some degree, I can obviously recognize and sympathize with Counselor Jackson, because it will bring an immediate infusion of dollars and investment. Banks will lend, you'll have something of value, people will come in with great ideas and a business plan to create those very opportunities that Counselor Presley is obviously seeking to do, along with Counselor Yancy, and Counselor Jackson, and all of us. So, it's an interesting sort of dialogue that you're starting to see. There's been some great work by Counselor Presley. Clearly, there's a desire and a need in a community. And look at our neighborhood, Council President, we have too many of these. We have too many liquor licenses. I would be happy to give some other communities and some other neighborhoods an opportunity to get that infusion of investment, to get that job creation going. And so, it's, I'm looking forward to participating in the hearing, and just wanted to offer that I can actually sort of see both sides of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Yancy.
Mr. President, I'd like to commend both Counselor Jackson and Counselor Presley for the work on this issue. Many years ago, I believe it was the first term of Counselor Sal Lamatina, he approached me and asked if I would support increasing the number of liquor licenses in his particular district, using the empowerment zone mechanism. And I supported that. Mr. President, I don't believe that we're looking at mutually exclusive proposals here. Obviously, this is going to committee, and it's one of the issues we can work out, but I don't believe that there's, here's the difference between Counselor Jackson's and Counselor Presley's objectives and goals. So, I'm looking forward to a very productive hearing. Again, it is important, whether you're an at-large city counselor or a district city counselor, to look at what's in the best interest of the entire city. And today, we live in a city where there's tremendous inequality, there are tremendous disparities, and that has to be concern, the concern of every member of this body, whether you're a district city counselor, a large city counselor, whether your district is more adversely impacted by others. So, I look forward to the hearing, and again, I rise to commend both Counselor Jackson and Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Counselor Yancy. Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Yancy, as always, you are an eloquent statesman, and I couldn't agree more. We are not at odds here in intention. Counselor Jackson and I are both committed to ensuring that every neighborhood have a fair opportunity to build community and to build wealth. What I do think is rather ironic, and I'm encouraged, is that people are clamoring to work in this space, when a couple of years ago, this would have been incredibly controversial and very third rail. So, I think that that does speak to the fact that there's real momentum and an appetite, pun intended, for real change here. And so, I, again, I thank Counselor Jackson for his leadership and for his partnership in this space, and I look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Docket 0438 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0439, Counselor Wu offered the following order for hearing regarding improved internal processes for licensing small businesses.
Our Chair recognizes Counselor Wu on docket 0439.
Mr. President, this is a companion hearing order to docket number 0386 filed last week, the prior hearing order to look at the laws, and how the laws on the books could be streamlined, maybe consolidated, some eliminated, of the many, many requirements and boxes that have to be checked as a business owner is going through the process. This hearing order is to look at the procedures internally. So, no matter what laws we're dealing with, no matter what the requirements are, how could we respond faster, more efficiently, with more coordination between departments? Mayor Walsh and the administration have made some great strides already in reviewing all of the existing systems and pushing forward continued innovations. So, this is to kind of get everybody, all the departments on the same page, everybody who's involved at all in the process, and to hear from business owners, particularly how, particularly new business owners who find the process daunting, what further changes could be implemented. I think always about those first-time business owners, whether from immigrant backgrounds with language barriers, or working a full-time job while trying to open a new business on the side. We need to be thinking about those people, and how those who may not have time or resources to get help with the process can still have an easy time navigating it. So, look forward to pairing both sides of the issue, and thinking not just about the laws, but also the processes, the technology, and the coordination piece as well.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Madam Clerk, please add my name to that docket. Docket 04, oh, Counselor Murphy would also like to have his name added, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Seomo, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Yancy. Where am I here? Docket 0439 will be referred to the Special Committee on Small Business Entrepreneurship and Innovation.
Docket number 0440, Counselor Jackson offered the following order for hearing to establish comprehensive coordination of reentry services for former prisoners.
Counselor Jackson.
Mr. President, I rise to discuss a very important matter, a matter that takes a lot of resources in the city of Boston. We have seen a 14% increase of inmates released since 2011. Many of these folks are being referred as, based on the Duken case, the Annie Duken case, folks who've been getting out of prison based on what happened at that lab. But we have to do better as a city. We have about 300 men and women who are released each year to, I'm sorry, each month to Suffolk County. And to me, Suffolk County, in this regard, means Boston. Many of them are going back into the city. I think there should be a mayor's office of reentry to coordinate these resources and services, and so that we are dealing with housing, so we are dealing with oftentimes people coming back. So we are dealing with oftentimes people coming back and not having a license, so they're unable to work. So we're dealing with mental health and addiction issues. So we actually coordinate these resources. We know that there are panels that are done every single month, but we also know that much of this work is done by the police department. And I think some of these duties are better fit into other departments in the city of Boston. So that is why I'm putting this forward. I actually had an opportunity to speak during Black History Month at MCI Norfolk and let the young men that I spoke to up there know that we were doing this, and they were actually very encouraged by this. We need to know, Mr. President, 95% of the people that we send away come back. 95% of them come back. And we need to make sure that they don't end back up in jail. We actually know that we spend about $46,000 a year per prisoner. And in the Boston School Department, and I know the budget is not that great this year, but on average, we spend $16,900 per pupil in the school system. So we're spending 3X the amount on the men and women who were incarcerated. We need to do better. The cities that have put this forth have seen exponential drops in their recidivism rate. We have the resources, we should lead in this regard, and I look forward to an expeditious hearing on this. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Flaherty.
My name, Mr. President.
Please add the name of Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Murphy.
Counselor Murphy.
And add the name of Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley.
Important initiative and ask that my name be added. Before I was elected several years ago, I was Legislative Director for the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department for former Sheriff, now Secretary Andrea Cabral, who really put a premium on reentry services, and all the statistics that the previous speaker cited were correct. The other one is that if you look at those that are in county facilities, and the average length of stay is about 20, 25 months, it can't be more than two and a half years, the vast, vast majority live within five miles of the facility at South Bay. So these are our neighbors, these are our constituents, these are our friends, these are our family members in some cases. And given the fact that it's a relatively short stay, so many inmates are there for drug-related issues. So I commend him for his work. I think it's important that we work with other nonprofits. There are some great groups that are focusing on the addiction piece, on the housing, on the job training and job placement, and life skills, parenting skills for many of these people. So I think it's a great opportunity to have a resource that can really help coordinate this, work with all of the stakeholders, and make sure that we build a safer city and a safer county. So I commend the author. I look forward to a hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Yancey.
I commend Counselor Jackson. I certainly appreciate the focus on the issue involving recidivism in the city of Boston because failing to address this issue is bound to ensure that the violence, the sense of hopelessness and helplessness that we witness in the streets of Boston almost on a daily basis will continue. These individuals who have served their time should be treated as human beings, and we should recognize that all human beings have certain basic needs. They need shelter, they need food, they need everything that most of us take for granted. So I think this idea of focusing the city's attention as the other states to establish a comprehensive coordination of reentry services of former prisoners is very timely. In fact, it's long overdue. So I'd like to have my name added, and again, commend Counselor Jackson for his leadership in this area.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Please add Counselor Yancey's name. Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise to commend the maker and thank him for his consistent advocacy, his vigilance in this space. I'm especially encouraged by the fact that in the hearing title, it says comprehensive coordination. I want to underscore that because this is not another hearing to rehash what we know are the diverse needs of our, of those reentering into our communities and our neighborhoods, but really, how can we best coordinate existing services and identify where there are service delivery gaps? For those that are returning home, often they don't even have a home. They don't have a legit ID. They don't have a place to lay their head. And so, you know, we need to do our due diligence in making this as easy for them as possible to have a one-stop shopping. This is critical to the stabilization of so many of our families and really to the health of our communities. So I look forward to the hearing, and again, I commend the maker, and I wish to have my name added.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Please add Counselor Presley's name. Counselor Wu. And add Counselor Wu's name. Thank you. Docket 044 will refer to the Committee on Public Safety. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Last one on the line. My peripheral vision must be declining. Please add Counselor Zaken's name. Thank you.
Docket number 0441, Counselor Jackson offered the following order for hearing to discuss how integration of social impact bonds affect the state's procurement system and service delivery.
Counselor Jackson.
Mr. President, social impact bonds are an innovative new way to fund many of the social programs that we have. And social impact bonds are performance-based contracts between governments and private or nonprofit organizations in which the organization pays the upfront cost of implementing the social service programs, and governments repay the investors only if the organization achieves agreed-upon social outcomes. We have a lot of cuts that we're facing this year, and in particular, in the School Department. We have a School Department that's putting forth and advancing a budget that cuts adult education fully out of the budget. Governor Patrick has put forward about $25 million with a program called ROKA to deal with recidivism and to lower those rates. This is a pay-for-performance contract, and the great part of it is, and my good friend from Brighton will like this, is that it actually doesn't sit on our budget. It doesn't sit on our budget rolls until the end of the actual bond, when the payment actually needs to come. And so I think it's a really good way to look at actual outcomes to our programs, not only continuing to fund programs that don't have a definitive, actual outcome, return on investment, or return on objective. And it allows us to take this innovation of using private funds to leverage social issues, which they're doing at the state level, they're doing in New York City, and I think we should look at how we can do more of this in the city of Boston. So thank you for this opportunity, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Zaken.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to commend the maker here and just add that, as you know, as a former municipal bond attorney, hearing about social impact bonds is sort of, to me, one of the best examples of the public-private partnership we always hear about, especially when it comes to important social services that are often being cut in federal, state, and sometimes our municipal budgets as well. So I look forward to the hearing, look forward to learning more about ways we can take advantage of this opportunity in the city of Boston, and please add my name.
Please add the name of Counselor Zaken. Thank you, Counselor Zaken. Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the author and ask that my name be added also. We should have a vehicle for private partners and foundations that want to partner in these social endeavors, and we don't have that right now. So I commend the author and look forward to a hearing where we can explore these avenues and give corporations and foundations the ability to invest in our social capital. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Please add Counselor Siomo's name. Counselor Jackson.
And through you, I'd like to thank the two experts in the room on this. Had I known that I had counsel in the room, Mr. President, I would have actually co-authored this with him.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Docket 0441 will refer to the Committee on Ways and Means. I'm informed by the clerk that there are two late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The clerk will read the first late-file matter.
Offered by Counselor Jackson and O'Malley, order for hearing to examine and discuss the comparative risks of shifting school travel modes of transportation from school busing services to MBTA trains and buses. Whereas every school day, parents entrust the Boston Public Schools with the responsibility of safely transporting our children to and from schools, and whereas other concerns, I'm sorry, I'll do the resolve, and therefore be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to examine and discuss the relative risks associated with shifting student school travel from yellow buses to shuttle services to MBTA trains and buses. Be it further ordered that the representatives of the Boston Public Schools, the Boston Police Department, Boston Transportation Department, Black Educators Alliance of Massachusetts, students, activists, and parents be invited to attend.
Counselor Jackson.
Mr. President, again, as I noted, there is a difficult year in the school budget. We currently have 33,000 students on buses, and there's a proposal before the school committee to cut service for 6th through 8th graders, 4,400 young people in the city of Boston who would not be afforded the current service. This is difficult for me. We have yet to deal with many of the issues around public safety that these young people, now we have the check of getting on the bus, them getting to school, and we know that they're there, we know that they've been dropped off, and the reverse. But now when we look at this, we would be offering students who live up to 1.5 miles away a full pass from the MBTA, but if you live 1.49 miles away, you would get a reduced pass. So it's possible, Mr. President, that we could be putting a tax on poor kids to get to school. A dollar on the train, a little less than that on the bus. We also need to really think about the public safety implications. We've dealt with a really difficult year in violence in our city early in this year, and to think about 4,400 additional young people having to walk to and from their house to a bus station, getting on the T in the cold, and worrying about and thinking about their safety. And I would submit to you, and I'm not an alarmist, but if anything happens to any of those young people, that's on us. It is our job to provide safe passage for every single young person to get to school. We have a school system that only has four folks who go around to find out whether or not young people go to school. And we're now putting another impediment in place when we're talking about access to excellence, focus on excellence. How about we focus on getting our young people to school safely? And I think that's what we should really think of, and so I look forward to an expeditious hearing on this. It is an education matter, so that's on me to do, but I think it's a really important issue around the safety of our young people in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Mr. President, I would note, as this is written, Counselor O'Malley and I, we have not hyphenated our names. We are actually still separate counselors.
Okay. We'll take care of that. Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank the lead sponsor on this, Counselor Jackson, my dear friend from Grove Hall. Since Counselor Jackson has been named Education Committee Chair and myself as vice chair, we've spent the last, really, I'd say, month or so meeting with several different parents from schools all throughout, all throughout the city of Boston. And I think we all recognize that this will be an incredibly difficult budget that we will be dealing with. It's at the school committee right now, it'll of course be before us as the next step, and we know that some difficult decisions need to be made. This is something that came up, I first heard about, and I suspect many of you reading about it in The Globe last week, as well as the companion piece which is coming after, and we just want an opportunity to figure out what led to this decision, what the cost savings would be. Are there other options that we can have in terms of some sort of a centralized charter bus, some transportation for these 7th and 8th graders, and I believe the 6th grade would be voluntary under the way the proposal is written? But it really does speak to the public safety piece as well as the fact that schools start very early, and you would have kids that would live in some of the more far-reaching parts of the city, many of which I represent, District 9, District 1, and others, that would have to conceivably leave their houses at 6:00 in the morning to get to school. So we want to make sure that this is done right. We want to make sure that the costs associated make sense, and I'm not sure that it does. But more than anything else, we just want an opportunity to figure out what is going into this. We know there are going to be some cuts, and we want to minimize it. And, you know, I had a terrific meeting with Mayor Walsh, who I know is committed to BPS and making sure that things work, and he is focused like a laser beam on this. Before it gets to us, as we're in the school committee phase, we want to make sure that we've really vetted everything out and can figure things out. There will be some tough decisions that need to be made. I don't know that this is the right one or the piece, the next piece, the second late file order, but I really think that as counselors, it is our opportunity, it's our duty to make sure that we vet everything fully, figure out what makes sense and what ultimately is in the best interest of the students. So I look forward to a hearing and invite you all to participate as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much. I'd like to commend Counselor Jackson and Counselor O'Malley for filing this late file. I'd like to have my name added. Mr. President, you've been around here long enough to know that whenever the city faces any type of budgetary difficulty, the biggest target is the School Department. It's the largest department that we have. Unfortunately, Mr. President, and historically, it's also the department that takes a disproportionate hit in terms of budget cuts. I guess because it's so large that the previous administration has recommended cuts in the School Departments, which represent well over 50% of the total cuts in all of city government. That's not fair. I'm not suggesting that's what's happening now. I'm still anxiously awaiting the budget submission, but I just urge that we follow the lead of Counselor Jackson and Counselor O'Malley to make sure that we're not sacrificing the very individuals who we are entrusted to take care of and who we are nurturing to become our future leaders. So I look forward to the hearing, and I ask that my name be added once again.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Please add the name of Counselor Yancey. Counselor Presley. That matter, the first late-file matter, will be placed in the Committee on Education. Please read the second late-file matter.
Offered by Counselors Jackson and O'Malley, order for hearing to assess the state of adult education and effects of the Boston Public Schools' proposal to eliminate all funding from the adult basic education program. Whereas the need for post-secondary educated and higher-skilled workers continues to grow rapidly, but more than 99,000 adults living in the city of Boston lack a high school education and critical basic skills to meet the demands of the 21st century workforce. Therefore, be it resolved that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to discuss the need, scope, and effectiveness of the available programs, the available public and private investment in adult education, and the effects of the Boston Public Schools' decision to eliminate funding from ABE. And be it further audited that the representatives from the Boston Public Schools, the Office of Jobs and Community Services, Department of Early and Secondary Education, Black Educators Alliance of Massachusetts, Department of Adult Education and Community Services, College Bound Dorchester, Boston Youth Services Network, Action for Boston Community Development, Boston Public School Parents University, Boston-Based Adult Education Parents University, Boston-based adult education service providers, and other interested parties be invited to testify.
Counselor Jackson.
Mr. President, we are a knowledge economy, and we are driven by high-skilled workers. If we don't provide high-skilled workers, then the clusters of innovation and technology that are around us will lead. This program, and for those history buffs in here who ask, "How long have we been doing adult education in the city of Boston?" We've been doing it 145 years, and we're at the brink of zero, a goose egg, in funding for this program. Let's talk about some of the folks who are there. It's the most effective way to improve economic conditions. We have a zealous advocate for breaking cycles of poverty in Counselor Presley. This is one of the ways that we do that. It's the most effective way to improve academic achievement of children, because, understand, the best way to estimate or figure out how a child is going to do is to figure out how their parents are doing. And so 87% of the adults in the adult education program and day classes are parents of Boston Public Schools students. Can you imagine not being able to help your child with their homework? Not having that opportunity to do better for yourself as your child is doing for themselves? The community organizations that we've all toured, and I want to thank Counselor Murphy, when he was president, we went on the tour with Bison, and we saw the great organizations that were doing this work, but the thing that they were asking us for was more funding, because most of them have a waiting list of over 400 people on their list. We are a city that is increasingly more diverse. We have amazing, great immigrant families moving into the city of Boston, but we want to make sure that their parents have the opportunity to learn English and to do better for themselves and to move up that economic ladder. We have a lot on our shoulders and on our plate this year. I get it. But if we can't do right by Brenda, who called me before this meeting in tears, who's at the Burke, and whose program is slated to be shuttered, if we can't do better, and I went to school with her son, and she said, "I gave it all for my kids. I did whatever I could do to make sure that my kids were going to be okay, and now it's my chance. I'm doing well in this adult education program, and you guys are going to take it away." I think that we really need to think about that word "mobility" and opportunity and access for people who need it, and this is our opportunity to look at that. I want to thank the staff. I want to thank Mike Nichols and Christine for the work that they did this week. As you can see, we've put a lot on the table, but we have an urgent, urgent issue in dealing with these issues of people who just want to shop and want an opportunity to do a little bit better for themselves and their family. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor O'Malley.
Mr. President, you know, once again, I think we're all cognizant of the fact that there will be some difficult votes that we have to take over the next couple of months, particularly when it comes to education funding. Federal funds, race-to-the-top funds are essentially nonexistent. In terms of state funding, the Chapter 70 funds aren't growing with the costs that are associated, so we know that there will be some difficult decisions, and we will all advocate in our own way to what we believe in, particularly with public ed, and I know we're all champions of that here. But this is just another example of a program that is successful, that in the grand scheme of things, costs very, very little money. And once again, to deal with some of the budget shortfalls, we read in the paper that it was just being completely obliterated, just completely zeroed out. Does that make sense? I don't know. It doesn't sound like it does. Is there an opportunity for some public-private partnerships with this? Quite possibly. I think that we've got some great opportunities with our colleges, with our universities, with some of our nonprofits. So I look forward to a hearing where we can sit down with the superintendent and his team, and I know he's doing good work, but just to really figure out ways that we can put together the best budget as humanly possible. It's early in the process, but I think it's vital that we get out ahead about, in terms of this and so many other proposed cuts that are coming down the pike. So once again, look forward to a hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President, and again, I rise to commend the makers for this timely order. A year ago, I held a public hearing about adult basic education and ESOL programs. Sadly, we've been here before, although what we're looking at right now is much more draconian. Programs in Charlestown, in Mattapan, and Roxbury were on the chopping block, and due to the collective advocacy of many of us, we were able to save the program in Charlestown, the program in Mattapan, but sadly, the program in Roxbury at Sociedad Latina was defunded. You know, there is a residual impact here. You know, all of us are heavily lobbied by youth advocates in a push for youth and summer jobs, and I've always maintained that the best gift that we can give a child is a stable adult. I want our young people to pursue employment, to build up their professional skills, develop a work ethic, the value of a dollar. I don't want them to work because they have to work. They should work because they want to. The reality is that many of them are having to contribute to their household income because the adult in their life has been destabilized, and increasingly so, more adults are pursuing education later in life, because sometimes life just gets in the way. So we need to make this investment. We have been falling far behind, as was highlighted in my hearing last year. Other municipalities dedicate 1% of their budget to invest in adult basic education, so in ESOL programs. So again, I commend the makers, and I would also just say, the projections of this and the implications, what is so frightening is that in defunding what the Boston Public Schools have been doing, the burden will be even greater on those community-based organizations that are already at capacity and have extensive, extensive waiting lists. So I commend the makers. Thank you for your leadership on this, the Chair and Vice Chair of Education, respectfully, and ask to have my name added.
Thank you, Counselor Presley, and please add Counselor Presley's name to that matter. Counselor Zaken, Counselor Yancey, Counselor Wu, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Baker, Counselor Flaherty. Could you please add my name to that matter? In our efforts to create committee criteria this year, we expanded the role of the Education Committee, and adult education is included in that at this time, and so this matter will be placed in the Committee on Education. The green sheets. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheet may do so at this time. No matters from the green sheets. Very good. There are four late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing, hearing no objections, the matters will be added. Please read. Counselor Yancey has requested that the Crispus Addicts Resolution be read, please, before we take a vote.
In the city of Boston, Boston City Counselor Charles C. Yancey, Crispus Addicts. Whereas Crispus Addicts on March 5, 1770, became the first man to fall in the American Revolution, along with Samuel Maverick, James Caldwell, Samuel Gray, and Patrick Carr. And whereas the five Americans were killed by British soldiers while protesting the violation of rights of colonists by British troops, and the Townshend Act were implemented by the British to indirectly tax the colony. Whereas Addicts in previous months had spoken in front of large crowds, inspiring colonists to courageously unify and fight for their freedom. Whereas Atticus, although he himself had not been treated equally, having run away from his slave master to become a whaler 20 years earlier, he was leading the march against the Townshend Act, laws passed beginning in 1767 by the Parliament of Great Britain when the massacre occurred. And whereas Addicts was born in 1723 to his father Prince, a slave of colonial Buckminster in Framingham, Massachusetts, and his mother Nancy, a native Indian of the praying Indian tribe of North America. And where Atticus, at age 16, was sold to Deacon William Brown, also of Framingham, where his duties included buying and selling cattle and traveling widely to look for business. And whereas Addicts, at age 27, escaped from Deacon Brown during a business trip to Boston, where he secretly applied for a job as a whaler. And whereas Addicts returned to Boston at age 46, during a time when King George III had tried to rule over the colonies without their permission, leading to arguments between Parliament and the colonists' leaders, and to tensions between British troops and townspeople. And whereas Addicts was targeted by British soldiers because of his bravery and his ability to inspire others to revolt against oppressive British rule, therefore be it resolved that the Boston City Council in meeting assembled does hereby declare March 5, 2014, as Crispus Addicts Day in the city of Boston, signed by Bill Lenihan, President of the Council, attested to by the Clerk Maureen Feeney, and offered by Counselor Charles C. Yancey, dated March 5, 2014.
The Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda is adopted. Counselor Yancey, for what reason do you rise?
The clerk for reading the resolution we just adopted, and to note, as mentioned, today is the 244th anniversary of the Boston Massacre. It's kind of ironic, this year, we had a council meeting on the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther's King Jr., January 15, and we're meeting here today, March 5, which is the anniversary of the Boston Massacre. Mr. President, I think it's important for us to celebrate the rich history of this great city and the contributions of everyone, as was mentioned last month, when you were so eloquent during the Black History Month event. This month, of course, we're going to celebrate St. Patrick's Day and Women's History Month, and I think that adds to the richness, and even in a small way, sense of purpose, of this legislative branch of government. So again, I rise to thank the clerk for her reading, and thank our colleagues for adopting the resolution which names today as Crispus Addicts Day in the city of Boston. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. I'd ask that all guests and all members please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselors Lenihan, Flaherty, and Murphy, Barbara M. Bailey Gill and Stephen J. Malone. For Counselor O'Malley, Patricia Henry. For Counselor Yancey, Alice Perkins, mother of Shirley Schillingford, President of the Caribbean Carnival Festival and Parade. For Robert Bobby Singleton and Crispus Addict. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, March 12, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of a German say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you.